Sorry, I'm not. I'll book the laptop and so all of these.
I'm ready to get up here.
So here's.
It's power. Guns go. Okay.
I'm really on L N C talk.
You know.
Go turn it off.
I can't get it.
He knows.
So now I'm good. Mayor and Council, we are on YouTube. So she. They receive.
Contact.
That is thirty minus. Wow.
I have a ton right here as the two of you.
What is? What you need to do is be on the TV zone. If she's going to present.
Yeah.
You're going. If you're gonna present online, just turn the TVs on and we'll be able to follow along. Actually, on YouTube, because she's on this laptop is. It's going now. So everybody can see. The presentation. We love. Yes. So you're sharing to people who needs to.
No.
It's good. You're right. So right now. You wanna do, right? Because you wanna share your screen. That's what you're doing, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's the broadcast that is in, right?
Yep, right here.
Okay, can we get this TV?
Can you reach it up about?
There ain't no batteries in here.
It's in what?
Oh, it is.
Oh.
Sorry.
Now, I mean, just to see it, sometimes watch it.
It's very challenging.
Make a list of what came to y'all, you know, just. You see my screen? We can. Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Uh, we don't need anything. Y'all can look up there. Okay.
Everybody's got the zoomed in, yeah.
Can you get one?
Oh.
Yeah. Splendid. Oh, what?
Keep on the one. I'll get a favor.
Ten. Welcome to the City Mayor and Council Work Session. For our budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, we're gonna turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
The fiscal year twenty twenty five budget, starting with the general fund first.
Are you sure it's simple, like?
I'm a little bit so. Don't reach. Talk and do it. Here. Can you go see the next page? That says general fund. Um, you can't. You can't see the next page on your screen.
Just, just turn on, uh, just let's y'all, um, let's just go, let's just get started.
Is it all of me now? And the first screen is gonna be, uh, general, uh, revenue for Pocahontas City. Going over the general fund.
Please turn. Briefly, this was. It's not about us hearing, it's about people hearing.
Okay. Okay. We gotta go to the first, um. It's under taxes implements. The third slide.
So are you going all of the? Are you going along? Geez, first you go. We need to be paid to about.
Need to pay him to about.
Is the zoom frozen? Or is it a delay?
It's a delay.
It's a delay.
Yeah. It's a delay. Very good. All right.
This is.
Yeah, here and go EMS. Is that fine? Is everybody fine with that? Okay. So we're gonna start with the EMS department. The very first slide is county and federal revenue for the EMS departments. Yes. Hmm, it's part of the EMS general fund. For reason. It's a good call. So in fiscal, in, in a governmental budget, revenue increased by eight percent from fiscal year twenty three to twenty four. Um, as you can see, that the total revenue from twenty four to twenty, uh, five. Um, and that is contributed to an increase in Worcester County Support Funds. And from fiscal year twenty four to twenty five, it increased five point two percent. And then, uh, twenty twenty six increased by forty six percent. The main factor driving the rise in the budget revenue from twenty three to twenty, uh, twenty three to twenty six are the increases support class. From Worcester County attributed to a rise in EMS service calls. Um, as you all are aware, that, uh, the support class for Worcester County is based off on the number of run calls, um, out of town and. Um, also, we will be, uh, using, uh, uh, three hundred forty two thousand for our parts. Which was allocated for the purchase of a new ambulance, which is already in production. Any question? The next revenue is that insurance claims and memberships. Um, as you can see, um, charges for service and revenue increased by, by two percent from fiscal year twenty three to twenty four. And six percent from twenty four to twenty five. And there's a projected increase of twenty two percent of charts for service and revenue expected in twenty six. And the main factor driving the rise in changes for service. Are collecting insurance claims attributed to rise in EMS service calls. And most of those calls, um, those claims are based on, um, insurance companies and also, uh, residents paying. So total revenue for, um, fiscal year twenty six is anticipated to increase by approximately thirty seven percent. And that is, uh, mainly attributed to the pain support funds from Worcester County, barber funding, and a rise in insurance claims. Any questions? So now for the expenses, um, payroll costs. So in fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, and twenty six, budget payroll costs rose by five percent, twenty eight percent, and nineteen percent respectively. The growth in payroll costs are primarily due to an increase in staff staffing to handle the increased call volume in Pocahontas surrounding Starset County towns. And with that being said, at that time, we had. Eight E N Ts and a total of nine paramedics to service those calls, and each year, those service calls are going up. Got a question?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, we're seeing a major increase. We went from a five percent increase in twenty twelve three.
Mm-hmm.
To a twenty eight percent.
Mm-hmm.
Increase in twenty twenty four into a nineteen percent increase in twenty. Um. For fiscal.
Fifty, once the anticipated twenty six. So you wanna know what the increase is for twenty four to twenty five or twenty?
Basically, so basically salaries have increased forty seven percent for EMS. Since twenty, uh, since twenty three, twenty four fiscal year.
That's correct. The module in twenty three, twenty four, they did not have as many E N Ts and, uh, paramedics as they do now. And you have to contribute to, when I say eight E N Ts and nine paramedics, that's full time, that is not including. Your part-time employees, and then also, also include that there has been an increase in overtime. And overtime is associated with, uh, right now, they're staffing being done. Now, it is anticipated, um, if they are back up to, um, full capacity, full employment, that. That overtime will decrease, and then we u- utilize their part timers more than what they are now. So those numbers right now, that's, that's just anticipated if we stay where we are versus if we actually get people. People, uh, people in the seats.
How am I sure? This time around that more part timers aren't wanting to utilize?
So right now, the way that I, that I anticipated and set it up, that we're gonna have to make sure the way that it is budgeted. That the part timers that are currently on staff, they need to work at least four hundred hours of the year. So we have to make sure that they are being utilized, and if they're not being utilized, then we need to. We need to look at our, our part-time staffing, 'cause we can't just keep hiring part-time people and they're not working the hours. They, it is crucial that part-time actually step up and they actually work. It is very crucial. That's gonna cut down on the overtime. It is gonna cut down drastically on the overtime. So our benefits for, um, EMS have also, you can see there, it's, it's kind of. So if you notice, there is a increase of nine percent from twenty three to twenty four, and then there's also an increase from twenty four to twenty five of fourteen percent. But there is a decrease of eighteen percent. So let me explain what that decrease is. That decrease is attributed to, one, our robust compensation has gone on down drastically. And that is because we have been very good about not having any accidents, not having any, um, type of, um, injuries, um. Then the other thing is hospitalization, which is actually our health coverage. A lot of our E N Ts and EMS, they do not utilize the city services for health insurance. So when we attribute that, and we actually take what our total health insurance is for. For Pocahontas City employees as a whole, we take just the percentage of employees that actually participate. Their contribution is only about, it's on, back, but it is about forty six thousand a year. That's why it's so drastically low. So every year prior to that, it may not have been actually allocated properly based off of how many, um. Employees were actually utilizing those services.
So the four stations would be roughly been using?
It isn't roughly what they've been using. So EMS uses approximately nine percent, they're about nine percent of the health insurance. So their operating expenses, um, over the year has increased. Two percent from twenty three to twenty four, six percent from twenty four to twenty five, and then there's an anticipated increase of twenty two percent. For fiscal year twenty six. And that is attributed to, uh, medical claim aid. So medical claim aid, that is based off of nine percent of total revenue. So medical claim aid holds nine percent of whatever is collected. So that, that, that sixty thousand seven fifty is based off of nine percent of medical claim aid and insurance claims. Also, we've had an increase in Keaton electric, um, not sure if it's gonna be the same next year, how whole of a winner that we're gonna have. Um, then also, our vehicle repairs are, have greatly increased because of the. Because of the, um, the age of the ambulances. Um, so hopefully, with getting this new ambulance, it will actually cut down on some of the, on some of the, uh, expenses. And we've also, uh, budgeted for, uh, increased training, and this is based on if. Just like with the police department, we do put people through the academy. If, it's based off of, if two people went from being an E N T to paramedic school, that's what that increased cost is. Not knowing if someone wants to participate in the program, but that's what that additional cost is. Now, with that being said, they would have to sign a contract if we would pay for their, um. Their school, for their tuition and, uh, books. Any?
If they don't go through with the contract, then we recruit the calls in the festival way?
We do, uh, so going to the academy for the police department, we actually, um, we actually do make them pay that back, no. We do do collection efforts as well if they do not pay it back.
Right.
For so many years. So right now, the, yeah, right now, the police department is three, so I would assume that we'd do the same service years as well, three years. So for capital outlay, um, they're requesting this year, a new ambulance, uh, which is already, it's already been. Um, started to replace, uh, two of the garage bay doors. The current bay doors are actually, uh, malfunctioning. Um, replaced two heart monitors. And to make upgrades to the back ambulance building. Uh, there is a condensation issue, uh, back there in that building. So total also in capital outlay, um, requested is four hundred seventy two thousand two hundred dollars. That is our EMS department. Anyone have any questions regarding EMS department? There are. There is one. There is one person who is currently in paramedic school, but they're not going through the city, um, for reimbursement. And I believe that person has another year going on to stay in the lab, 'cause it takes about eighteen months.
Is there a rich, limited, the condensation problem they have back in the back?
There is. There is a specific fan that needs to be, uh, placed in the police department, actually headed, put in. Back in July last year. I mean, have, it helps circulate the air. Let's go to our general fund. I'll start with our general revenue. So our taxes and permits. Real estate and personal property tax area is anticipated to increase by four percent. And this increase in twenty six is based off of the. Uh, us not increasing tax rates and the information that we receive from the state, state department. And you can also see that our business taxes, which is listed as ordinary business, uh, corporation, with an increase of business of coming in, that income has steadily come in for the city as well. For our local taxes, we have our income, local income taxes and admission and usements. And that is expected to increase by thirteen percent in fiscal year twenty six. Then for our license and permits, for fiscal year twenty six, it's expected to increase by, uh, seven percent. And with, I just wanna point out with, uh, franchise taxes, that is only for fiscal year twenty six. I don't. Not quite sure what was budgeted before, but that is only actually for contest, is, uh, is the only.
I, I do have a question.
You do?
So I wonder about this stretch, and.
Mm-hmm.
Why are we budgeting, uh, ten thousand dollars less than what we budgeted last year?
Based on what we have received now, anticipated now, that's approximately what's left. So what we budgeted in the first fiscal year, based off of about eight hundred and thirty some rentals, I believe. So until we can find everyone who is renting. I only can really go, I can only estimate based off what we have actually received thus far, but that's why it's decreased like that.
We can see your mind. So, I think the client mentioned it earlier, but we increased, uh. Ordinary business operations was the same as the one of the year before.
So it was very, with ordinary business, it's very hard, uh. To estimate that number, because it is based off of, some of them is based off of inventory. Um, like a car dealership, so I mean, back then, they're based off of inventory, and then you also have, um. Other places, it, it just, it's really based off of what their inventory and their machinery equipment is for that, uh, for that year. But considering what we've actually received, um, so far this year, it does appear that it's gonna remain constant from, from prior year budget.
And with deferred taxes?
So deferred taxes has to do with, um, revenue that is received after sixty days, um. So it's sixty days is what's considered. Current. Anything after that, after June thirtieth, it actually goes to the next fiscal year in its defer. So there's an adjustment that is made during the tax, uh, when they do the audit, that makes that adjustment. That's what that deferred tax is. And mainly, it has to do with, um, state highway tax. We do, normally, we don't get it till, like, September. It's always September. One year, it was August. If we get it in August, then it is recognized for June thirtieth, 'cause it is June thirtieth's revenue, but if it's received after September, it's after sixty days. Then it is deferred until the next fiscal year. And there's other, um, decreases in the revenue, like disallow, um, taxes and enterprise loan credit status based off of, um. Actual so far, um, Worcester County, what, uh, what they have like Pocahontas City. So next, we're gonna move on to intergovernmental charges for services. Intergovernmental, um, cert, uh, charges for services is mainly state. Or three, uh, state or federal revenue that we received, and we're anticipating increase by seven percent. And room taxes, as you can see, have a decrease. That is actually based off, uh, one of the hotels was closed. For, um, a portion of the year. They were not receiving as many, uh, didn't have as much, 'cause it was being renovated. So based off of that, that's why you see a small decrease in the room taxes. Um, state highway tax. Another one, that's, that's something that comes from the state, and it's kind of one of those ones where. Not quite sure what that number's gonna be. It normally does not decrease. It normally does increase. State police protection. That decrease, that did decrease from what we actually, uh, with the letter that we received. Um, we, it is based off of. Major crime in the area. So if there's a major crime, they can decrease the file. And that's what, and that's what happened last fiscal year. At the, the last quarter, they actually decreased. So then we also have the community legacy grant, the, um, these are the, some, uh, the majority of the grants that's, um. That care applies for, like the fat hate grant. Those are the grants that, um, help with the downtown association and all those special projects that she, um, does. And then economic development, as you can see, it, um, increased this year, six hundred seventeen thousand one hundred twenty five. That is the total amount that, um, Worcester County has funded. For charges for services, um, there's a decrease of three percent, and that three percent decrease is attributed to. It's mainly attributed to the fairground donation that comes from the state department. Um, considering we were unsure. What this year is gonna be, and if we're gonna receive that grant this year, that's why that decrease is there. Next section is investment earnings. Uh, we show a decrease in investment earnings of fifteen percent. So our investment, our investment earnings are based off, uh, our interest and dividends, our credit card reimbursement, low cabin. And also our county fire department funds, assault rents, and hiring with Blue, Blue Sur. Now, as you can see, our low cabin has actually, our low cabin rent has actually increased. It is. Our low cabin rental is booming at this point. There are hardly any weekends that it is not booked Saturday and Sunday booked. Um. So it is great, but it is being utilized to its fullest extent.
When do, so, when do the repairs start?
They will restart, the last of the repairs will start after the first week. The first week of June. They will go in and they will do the remainder of the, uh, the bathroom floors. They will replace the, uh, the lighting in that hall, in the hallways in between the men and the women's.
So all of this is what we come from, this game of B-Boss, we don't even have to talk about.
No.
Okay.
No. Nope. And then it's all reimbursable. Nope, and then it's all reimbursable back to us. So as you can also see, the county fire department fund, which is the restricted grant, was increased to seventy two thousand. That is an offset, as you will see in the fire department, we get to the expenses for the fire department, okay?
Just going low cabin rental, um. We, I know we increased it, what, what are we increasing to?
Well, we did not increase, we, we did not increase the rental.
We, no, haven't increased it, it's just that people have been. Renting way more than what they had. But we did, well, he's right, we did talk about something. I don't know if it was. It wasn't an increase, but we were taking. It was something in the deposit.
Yes, so with the deposit. We're gonna actually have people, they're gonna have to pay their deposit before they.
They're canceling now.
They're starting canceling out, and that has happened a couple of times, even, I'm gonna say this past two weeks. That stops people who we, we know who have actually said, hey, I want that date, and then now they're. You know, they pick a different venue because based off of someone else having it booked. So we have actually been telling people now, if they're trying to book in July, that you must pay your deposit first before we even put your name down and book. What's your money, low cabin, it's two hundred twenty five, two hundred, the low cabin itself. Now, we tell people that you don't have to share it, you don't have to share that day at all with anyone, that, that low cabin.
Well, see, but, see, that, that has actually changed from what I first thought of it. It was time slots, it wasn't for the whole day, but we did need to get rid of that, you know. This diet every morning I have. So, and that could be another reason why we're seeing rentals actually go up, because. If I'm ready to get at nine o'clock in the morning, and you're telling me that I have to be out of there, you want to lose my, it has to be over by now. For does, the uh, does comparison that, where it's historical status on the low cabin? The, I don't think the whole cabin is under historical status, it's not.
I don't believe so.
Oh, M D E, state environment, you didn't hear it.
So anyone have any questions? On the revenue?
Everything looks good so far.
So the next department we're going into the expenses is legislative.
Oh, that's y'all, not me.
City manager, so I did a combination legislative. So, legislative city manager. Mayor.
Oh, you don't, you don't, you don't certainly have the exact.
In a le- in an election. It's a combination. So legislative expenses are anticipated to increase by forty nine percent in fiscal year twenty six. And it's primarily due to budget increases and expenses, um travel, conferences dues, and the website update.
To what, is it again?
To travel, conferences, dues, and the website update.
So, I guess, we kind of talked about it before, we're looking at the plain city, but I'm upset. Um company out of our own, so they're local. Um they've done a couple of other websites from the area. We consulted with them a lot. And um I talked to them, and they were very pleased with what um, with what they saw, so. Hopefully, hopefully, then you remember we were going originally with that civic, civic plus. The city will literally. Say, Melinda, Randy, Kara, they will no longer even go in after this month. We will have twenty four hour services for this company does it for them. So let's say. They're at Raul, something crazy happens, one of us. The Uber user could send in the email and say, hey, you need a racket, they just want such a, such a rolling base in the bracket. And social media is amazing, they're not. This, all of the city's media stuff, we've got a whole team that's gonna hit them. And I didn't know that it was gonna be like this, right up the road ahead.
So we're just gonna have real work on with Civic Plus in general, I mean, we have not even. Started utilizing their services, I mean, it's, it's just been a real headache, and this is just. They did. So the next is our executive, it's the city manager. So the city manager, those expenses uh is anticipated to increase to fiscal year of twenty six. And those calls, as we know, are associated, associated with finding new qualified managers. Questions, I see everybody looking.
No, because I mean the salary, the, the old guys would get.
And you all got the things, yeah, because you don't even know when they're gonna start, we don't know um. If we have to put additional advertising calls, so those, those items are also associated as well.
Ms Matthews, will the deputy city manager's position be on here or did that get moved someplace else?
They don't, they won't then with finance. Do you guys want me to take that out, make it, I can do it separately, or how you want me to do it separately?
You don't have to, just make sure that when you can vote.
Yes, okay.
And move in our announcements later, but just make sure there's some over under legislative.
Because I kind of do the same thing with um, on the little department head, because they do multiple that is split into different, into different categories.
Okay, I'll do that too.
Do it into different categories.
Do it into different categories.
You got it, okay. So then next up is our, is our mayor, um expenses are, it's not listed there, but I have it all to the side. The expenses are, they're expected to increase by fifty nine percent, and it's due to trial conferences and dues. Now, mind you, with our trial, you know, we participate in M M L, both M M Ls, and then we also have uh different subscriptions and dues that are due to. Also to M and M, M M L and our M M L, M, M L dues did increase this year. Last year, they allowed for us to take the lower rate, they are now increased this year. And it's kind of not something that we can avoid.
So what were you asking there, so see, this is what I want. Is it because this is the balance off? Because it is, that is the extra money the N L C dues.
No, no, um, it's not, that is separate. She actually told us with the, and I, Melinda sent her an email about N L C. That is, our N L C dues, the additional cost that we pay for N L C is for every other member. And also for like any other department heads that we add to N L C.
The M M L has paid our membership, so we shouldn't be paying N L C anything.
No, she said.
Covering you.
So you're telling me there's some fine plan?
Yes, we got the email.
Maybe the municipalities pay, party left unofficial.
Yes, yes, we have the email.
We will look into it.
Okay. Yeah, me and Melinda along, yeah, Melinda, I had Melinda look into it, because I need to know. You know, what our dues and subscriptions are, because now, especially with the new members, and when everyone is starting to participate into. You know, into the actual municipality, the conferences uh that are offered throughout the state. But I had Melinda double check, hey, can you figure out what we're supposed to be paying, what additional costs?
It was, I emailed Felicia first, and then Felicia.
Felicia, uh.
I can't pronounce her last name. Yes, her, emailed her first, and then the reply was from Paula Hyman to talk to. Sharon, and then that's where I got my answer from.
I got, somebody's got something to do.
I will forward that to you.
There's additional calls for the. N L C, for personally, I'm, I'm, I'm.
So then there's also, there's actually also, there was a increase to M M L as well, and. We kind of can't get.
So what we need to do is, we need to go in and get these people off the wrong. Because, but you know, I got rid of some.
Okay.
So we need to go in and see who's wrong. Because the last time I looked for N L C, it was specifically, Russell Blake's name was still.
I think I took him off when I registered, I think the only people that were on there, the new council members and John at the top, so we know that John. John has to come on, but all other council members were doing, but I also think I put in the department head someone as well.
So take that all, or the emails out. If it's anything that would be of interest, we'll just forward the emails on.
And just to let you know, M M L itself did increase their dues as well. Um they let us take the lower rate last year, but this year we have to take the increased rate, and it has to do with.
Is that a big offset about what's in by population?
It does, it's by population.
So when they announce people cover my N L C. Right, so that was how it should cover it.
Yes.
Because.
So this year also funded for um election, because we will have an election in each year twenty six, correct? There will be an election at large in seven, eight.
There will be a, there was a, there was like. Twenty twenty six. Next we, we got, this is supposed to be our.
So we're going to the finance department. And as you see, there's an anticipated uh increase of twenty two, twenty six percent in fiscal year twenty six. But my part, primary increases are associated with staffing changes, increased costs, same quality costs associated with paper. From something, but we just talked about. Um reallocating a portion of those expenses into different category. To come more in line with the, with the job. And also remember, last year we did not have an accounts payable person, and now we do. Next, we're moving on to general services, which is primarily just the city fold. So the expenses for fiscal year twenty six are anticipated to increase by around five percent. And as you can also see, uh we are increasing the repairs and maintenance anticipated ended up top of the year. This building is old, and it does need repairs. Um we do need some upgrades, um primarily in the front. And just, you know, H V A C and council chamber as in job. And also our data processing. No, go ahead. Yes.
I need y'all to fix our stairs about.
That's, that's. So one of the things that we did talk about was, one, the bay area. That's number one, the bay area. So we did talk about the bay area, one, the bay area. In the finance office, so the finance office, we do still have capital outlet, but it funds for fiscal year twenty five that we do want to upgrade. The curtains, the, the painting, like if you go into that one room, I mean, it looks like. Yes, it does, it looks bad, um. So we, we have actually said that there are some things that do need to be done, and we want, want it to be done. And then I just wanted to draw your attention to the data support, processing support. That is actually our Tyler Technologies uh program. And the reason why I'm drawing your attention to that is because of the increase. It was noted for three years that we had not been billed.
For what?
For our services, for uh programming itself, so for three years, they never billed us. They did not ask for reimbursement. They just made us aware, hey, this is what you're supposed to be paying each year. Now, it's not that total, so that also includes that uh data process support, also it's like our credit card processing fees and stuff like that.
Are we sure that they weren't, it wasn't coming out of the account there?
No, it was not, I double checked, I double checked, it was not. It was not, it was for, for three years, and basically when COVID hit, it stopped, and that's what happened.
That's your, that's your dude, right?
Yes, the supervision, the other one is um, Miss Debbie and Dominic.
That were your, your, the.
That's gonna be split, yeah, they will be split out, yes.
Who else did we split before?
Mike, and, and we also split, remember we split Bill as well, so you'll see Bill. Yeah, you'll see Bill split in three different places. So just remind, just let me know what percentage you want me to split where, and then we'll go from there. Our police department. So our police department, um and for fiscal year twenty six, it really remains constant with um the previous year, so there's really not uh a really big change. In expenses um from fiscal year twenty five uh to fiscal year twenty six. Now, for fiscal year twenty six, for the police officer calls, there is an anticipated increase of four percent in fiscal year twenty six. But you also see that there was a thirty three percent increase in fiscal year twenty four to twenty five. And that was mainly due, uh just a reminder that there was a pay rate increase middle of the year of fiscal year twenty five. And these salaries are based on if they are at full max staffing. And you will see a couple of new lines, uh Ritz B Capital Outlet. So right now, Ritz B. Ritz B itself, we actually see, receive revenue from Ritz B Camera, and that is used for the police department itself. So those, to make it easier to track for the police department, it is easier, because they have to show a report of what expenses. They actually spend from Ritz B Camera, so it is easier to separate those expenses in a separate line item versus trying to combine them with uh. With like equipment repairs, we give repairs or whatever it is supposed to be for, go ahead.
So um, the ordinance, re- resolution that I read last night. Are you gonna create a special account? Because the, the language said. Because the, the language said that it could not be used for. General, it could not be used for general expenses and it wasn't exclusive to the police department.
So right now, with the way that the wording was before, the wording was for capital expenditures. And it was for originally for like parking meters, which we don't have parking meters anymore. It was parking meters, like street uh parking lot repairs, it was the, that's what it was originally intended for. So we could change the ordinance to say to. To change it to say specifically capital expenditures for police department and for streets and sidewalks. We could do it that way where it's a fifty fifty split. Because if you really.
It's a special project.
Yes, for special projects. Because if you really truly think about it, what those fees are associated with, it is for people parking on a sidewalk. It's for violations of handicap parking. It's, so it's, it is actually helps. Us pay for some more streets and for us to pay for some more sidewalks. And it also helps the police department for some of their outdated equipment as well. So it's not only helping just the police department, it's also helping. Helping the residents of Oklahoma City as well.
Now, we should be able to go a little bit lower, be in pairs.
Yes.
What, why the, does a decrease in the K nine?
Well, no. We have a new hire, um Bria Hill. In July, she had, she had a K nine, so there will be two K nines in Oklahoma City.
But doesn't say off a fire damage to get that, I mean, basically paying for spending.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, so yeah, they do. So we have to pay the K nines. Normally, it was not separated. But for transparency purposes, um she can ask for it to be working out separately. To show that the K nine differential, actual, actual salaries itself. So basically, that's the, the K nine.
Is it? Because this officer is coming with a K nine. Now, I know that in the city, which is a K nine. Not assigned to somebody, you have insurance and all of that dog. Is because this dog is coming, do we have to accomplish?
No, the only thing that we, so when, if she ever left, the dog goes with her. Where, whereas before the state mandated that we would have to pay for that dog for life, we, we are not required to do that. That's, that's the difference now. So there was a law change, maybe five years ago, is it five years ago?
First senior officer that asked you.
Yes.
For boot training.
Boot training, yeah. But that's what, that's why it's double. So basically, it's to, it'll be two K nines starting in July. And it's not the beginning of July. I think it's like the mid, maybe first week of August. So it's not, it's not right July.
No, maybe more than we are.
The move is that vehicles or carriers will go down. Uh I think the, I think the oldest ship. We, yeah, because I'm gonna be honest, the only vehicles that are left that are, but. I think it's May, I think it's this week or next week, they're supposed to be getting all their equipment placed in. Yes. And I believe the only two older vehicles at this point are chiefs and cats. After the other, after the other ones get the, the necessary equipment in, there will be no models, I think, less than twenty two. So their uh police training will um will increase by twenty percent this year and that is due to. Um right now, we have three new police recruits that will go in to, no, to. Two, there are two, two going into the police academy in July. But that is anticipated based off of three. And then our police dispatch, um for police dispatch, um. It is an anticipated increase by about four percent. Any questions in our police department? I was stressing about this power plant vegetation, I'm just gonna tell you all that now. I don't like power. I should have. Um so now we're gonna go to the public works department. And this one's a little bit bigger and I had to break it up into different uh sections. So we're gonna start with general public works and then street uh sanitation. What I skip?
Do we still have any?
We do. So for the fire department, is that? It's on your, so the reason why I did not place it there because of the. So I tried to put the, the biggest departments on there, um but the, the fire department, you'll see a decrease.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that decrease, so last year, we actually contributed more to them than what we would normally do. And that was because we uh replaced, helped replace the cascade and also the hoses uh. For the fire department, which uh my attorney came in today, um instantly the last invoice.
This neighbor shed or building over here, right here, who owns that and what have they doing with it?
Tell me that one building? That I'm not sure.
Let's get off of work stuff. See if we can acquire and speak this.
That, that building.
Because we're being going for electric bills and and all of that, which we know that that's not happening, but. That was just a bad deal. That's not gonna be conversation with them. Because why we're really in, now they. To raise our pay, but what was the percentage that they says uh? It was uh um. Twenty eight and nineteen, they forced us to raise it. But they're also still reaching out saying, hey, we need you to, we're gonna need you to up their volume. Have they brought any more money to the table?
No.
And then they do newspaper on, they say, oh, we look at money from our rainy day fund.
But right now, our EMS, while everything is going on, they're still having to respond in some set county, deeper into some set county. And and that's, and that's not right to us here in Oklahoma City, that now while. Yes, everyone needs an EMS service, not saying that, but how fair is that to us that we're servicing part of that county? In your county just pulled two point seven million and we're only getting thirty five thousand.
Then wait a minute. Might have worked to y'all, to y'all attention before we got in on there. More especially me. No, it was eleven thousand dollars. That's it. Eleven thousand dollars. It was a bad Lord Hagee. And we need to go to their kind of commissioner's meeting instead of them, instead of their school board trying to buy.
So did, did that answer your questions about the fire department? Okay. And like I said before, you can see that there, that unrestricted decrease to um, a decrease in the fire department as well. And that is based on, that is a restricted granted. We pass through to the fire department from Worcester County and that's, that's not something that we said, it's just, it's a pass through. So moving on to public works. And we're starting with uh the general public works and street sanitation. So in fiscal year twenty six, general public works expenses are anticipated to increase by thirteen percent. And that is mainly due to the construction of the new public works building and to outfit the building. And when I say outfit the building, that's to make sure they have some furniture in, that they get to sit down. That, you know, that was probably, that was probably my biggest thing is that you have to go outside and you pour it to eat and not really have somewhere to sit down to eat. That, that's. No, they should be able to sit down at a table. So, and as you also can see, in twenty five, the expenses increased, the budgeted expenses increased by two hundred fifty six percent. But that was due to capital outlay, which is where we replaced the uh F nine fifties. So that's all the F nine fifties that you see Ryan on the town app. So our public works department, they're coming up in the world. So in FY twenty six, street sanitation expenses are expected to decrease by thirty six percent. And that's due to um original budget, the capital outlay at this time. Move as quick as I can. Waste collection, waste disposal, and ground maintenance, uh waste collection expenses expected to decrease by, go ahead. So waste collection is expected to decrease in twenty percent, uh by twenty percent. And that is because uh a couple of our employees have been reallocated to different departments within public. And our vehicle repairs, yes, they should decrease, but that is, that was based off of us not having. A new trash truck, which we do now. We do have a new, new trash truck and we have a newer trash truck. So basically, we have three at this point. And then our ground, um our ground maintenance is anticipated to decrease by eleven percent. And that's because there's no capital outlay again for fiscal year twenty uh twenty six.
Sounds great to me.
Streets and highway and mechanical auto. Our streets and highways are expected to increase by sixty percent and is uh just. Expected to increase for repairs in the streets and sidewalks. So we are anticipating to try to do at least eight streets this year. And we're budgeting five hundred thousand dollars for construction. You did say eight today. You tried to do ten. So I guess it's gonna really based on how many. Miles.
Well, it's thirty streets. If we, if we stay with it, we can have it done in. Thirty, forty years. Every street in this town.
In this town.
She's talking about a street repair.
Street repair. Thirty streets, that's just about thirty streets or, that's what he said in town, that's about thirty.
I'll see you in time in the office, man.
It's roughly about sixty nine dollars per street. And then somewhere a bit more, so sure.
So just, just keeping back in your mind, that's gonna be another thing that we're gonna have to come up with. What street?
That's what I'm saying. I think they think. We're gonna do soon. I mean, we do know that some streets are gonna have to be skipped because their pipes have. Even bigger covers. I think that you probably speak up on what's out of the hole versus. Well, let's just put it out there. I, I don't know.
So second street. Is the street that we were referring to. Their pipes need to be replaced first and there's no need to do the street itself because the pipes are replaced. Yeah, they wanna do the work.
Right, but remember timings. Timing this was a problem versus G V company. Cause you remember that's how V, a rhythm. You know where the pipes are already replaced at? You know where the pipes are already replaced at? You know where the pipes are already replaced at? Are already placed, they're already replaced. They do. I'm saying, you know where, the pipes are already replaced.
Like what, what section is now?
Down, is second street, front street's already down. So if we're working out, would you have to go touch the bottom?
Yeah.
Also, but really second street, it may. My street, you know, but remember, it's only me that lives on my street. Well, well, it's only me that actually lives on my lot. Um so I'm not, I'm not.
So that's, that's the one street we know it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost some money because. There's no need to repave it. Cause there's no need to repave it, knowing that we gotta tear the road up, cause you're gonna end up turning it up again. So I mean, that's not cost effective. So that's something that we need to keep in the back of our mind to the streets that we know that the homes, that the pipes need to be replaced.
We don't have any.
So there is, there is a, there is, um.
Is it tenth street though? Replace the heights and replace the. Tenth street.
Cedar, I think there's picks. That need to be replaced and they're actually, the paperwork and stuff has been done, but it won't be in this fiscal year, which is why they're not in this budget.
We jump in, cheat it all.
Where they're going, so that's gonna affect street repairs. Okay, so I, Melinda, we both have that email, yes.
Well, my thing is if they bust up the streets. We repave, we repave. What she said, the project's not. So we need to know what streets are going to be targeted. The last thing we wanna do. Yeah, I got you there.
Because it's not, because I don't even think the funding will start. We had to do all the paperwork, but the funding won't. Yeah, okay. So our next department is our mechanical and auto department. Um it is expected to decrease by eighteen percent and it's because there's no capital outlay that has been allocated for this budget year.
Listening to you. Because I don't understand why we need. Uh while we continue to pay someone salary to do mechanic work and we outsource everything.
Yeah.
Either whole changes.
Yeah. The law, if it's not, if it's newer vehicles, he's not changing that. And he can't change any of the newer vehicles anyway because he was voided warranty on his vehicles. So it would have to be like some of the like Bill's vehicle, like the older one.
I think that. I don't know, but we found any. Because. Correctly, I'm. Starting this down. We've been, it's been out in the air about this. Before.
Mm-hmm. Because chief uses someone else and and. EMS stays someone else. To service the vehicles and like I said, I made it very, very clear that.
The winner can't even get.
No.
They can't even figure.
No.
So long.
No. I actually told them that they they cannot, those vehicles have to go to a, they have to go, those new vehicles cannot be serviced there, they have to, cause it's not even a void warranty.
And I'm not saying, certainly.
No.
For what I am saying is, is there something else that he did without, because what does he do all day?
That's a big question, that's a big question, that's a big question. So these are some of our other smaller um our smaller entities um under public works, golf course, ball cabin. Railroad station and parks um. The law cabinet is expected to have a thirty percent increase in expenses, but this is due to cleaning costs um which have, that are due to the higher usage. Right now, it's easier to have someone clean the law cabinet and once we can um do a deep clean to keep up with the. To keep up with the uh building itself and then and everybody, go ahead.
What was that contract like? One of them all, I know that Jerry's on a contract, how many people here is up in that contract? And I'm not saying that we get rid of the golf course, I'm not saying that the golf course not be utilized for disco, but I feel like. If anybody's making a profit, it's uh it should be us.
Do you have the, the nowhere to come back?
You need to report back to us later, will you? But you get what I'm saying, you know, we're there only a national point, this is not out there. And they're they're out there for free. And the city's not making a profit off of any of that. And I'm not saying that they're not doing well, I'm just saying that they're. Maybe people here, because evidently they are. Much like pickleball, we got the vegetable ball courts on the eastern shore. Really? I don't know how to play, do you?
No. It's 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 one of the top two, that and then the one that's over in our field.
I heard Scott plays well.
Scott is the best.
We call him baby.
Since the, since the.
It's all.
We, I don't spend all, cause I just wanna just hit. Hit back over, you know, all that stuff.
Pretty ball, it's a lot like ping pong, like you're standing on the bed.
Yeah. Yeah. It's suddenly went back on. Or on the table.
Your owner.
Yeah.
And it's just, would it break their hands then?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, for the smaller, older, you get with me. It's not bad, she get rid of it, but.
It's like a little ball.
I'm a wash. Sorry, Melinda.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So. Uh station building expenses are expected to increase by thirty eight percent and as we all know that that.
Get some solar damage out there, man.
For on the ground.
We should have some of any can count, so we don't pay all this money.
This is true. That's it. This is it, it's entire. Kind of the last part of the meeting here that they had that, you know, there were some repairs that needed to be done. I haven't physically been in there, but I know that there were some repairs that needed to be done and we need to just kinda go check on it. And last is our.
That's all. See, see, there's a lot of other capacity. So it's all we can do.
Building.
Yeah.
They're already now open everything, that's for the building.
So our park expenses are slated to decrease by five percent uh from last year. So last year apartments, um expenses actually increased um and it was because it was budgeted for the lighting upgrades, which have already taken place. And that was fully reimbursed by last year. Plans on the department.
I'm sorry, what was the last thing you said?
The. Park, the park. About the half outlay um last year. That twenty thousand nine hundred last year. That was for um the upgrades to the lights, so this year we don't have that. So it decreases by five percent this year.
Why? Why is that increasing the better expenditures?
For parks.
Yeah.
Capital outlet. So that capital outlet was being lighting upgraded and um.
Uh, I got it.
Plan and zoning department. The expenses are expected to increase. By thirty four percent and those increases are um anticipated based off of building permits. Building permit plans are being by first state um inspection and calls associated with new business incentive rebates. So in prior fiscal years, um first state inspection family reviews and permits were actually netted against revenue, this is just transparency to show what anticipated. Possible calls are for what we pay out for first aid to actually review those claims. Now that number is just an estimate, um just can't really tell who is going to build what zoning, what uh common electric plan, so that is just basically an estimate.
Well, the good news is that all of those permits will, you know, processed.
The.
Will be over each month, or a month, so.
Yes. And.
Then they're, we're trying.
Trying. And everybody knows what the new business incentive program is, correct?
Yes, but we need to. Uh wants to get that number developed, usually at once, that's something that makes it all. This this is the new business. The new business initiative is forward and making. They had already established it before I got out of the sentence.
Okay. So next up is our code enforcement department. And this department is a little harder to uh because they separated. And they're in their own building now, so last year they had a hundred percent increase because they were in their own specific building. And we also had the demolishment of the armory, which is included. And with the armory, those total expenses in FY twenty five, it actually decreases uh. Into next year, it's been budgeted by eighty five percent. Now, while we're not expecting any demolition calls, there are still homes. And buildings that are still up that are possibly, we will have to demolish.
How many are all this now?
Right now, I think Mike said there's three, three.
Well, I see they're they're found.
Yeah. And some of our operating expenses are um estimated based off of just what what we've actually um, what what actual is as of today's date. Fifty four. There was no heat, I mean, there always was heat and electric, but that has increased because there's someone there um also with like building repairs and renovations, there should not be any because everything was kinda upgraded. Once they move down there, there is a new HVAC system, but we just have to make sure we keep the maintenance and there is a, I believe there's fifteen year warranty on it as well.
Salary increase.
Say that one more time.
I just said the salary increase for borrowing, do you hear the city?
So the next one is, it's gonna be grant writer. Economic development coordinator and events coordinator. Now, while before we did not have a um. Although for we did, we did have a part-time grant writer, um. It is anticipated, if it is needed in fiscal year twenty six, that we are budgeting for a, at least a part-time grant writer. Uh economic development coordinator. Led um in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, it was actually budgeted as the actual grant writer. And this year is, it's considered economic development coordinator. And the expenses are increased by twenty, two hundred and twenty-three percent, but that is based off of the grants. Right expenditures, which are one hundred percent reimbursable grants. That's what that increase is for. And then, then next we have our events and promotion coordinator, and as you see, there's a decrease of twenty eight percent, cause our events coordinator is now part-time.
Well, thirty one, Susan. I was on D P A meeting last night for a million of y'all. Susan, we're at it. It's doing a great job. It was worth seeing the D P A. It was worth seeing her in her element, it was worth to see everybody at the table, making it to the gathering.
Table.
In that meeting. Uh it's gonna be even better once she branches all. Out from downtown, she's got a lot of ideas, she's good here, great here.
The next is payroll, costs and insurance, and this is, this is actually um. Health insurance, pension, work with compensation and um. Other insurances like a vehicle liability. So you know, this payroll cost in fiscal year twenty six is anticipated to increase by thirty seven percent. And this is primarily due to the city's increase of core contribution from rental estate retirement. This year, rental estate retirement increased greatly and it is based off of the number of employees. By then April. Of the fiscal year that we're currently in is based off of their salary, whether they will only here a few months. It is based off of their salary that we have to pay. That contribution. And that's what this is, this is mainly based off of rental estate retirement. Um there's no change in the work with compensation, as you remember what I told you before in the other department, work with compensation, uh work with compensation has actually decreased greatly each year. And then our total insurance is anticipated to increase over thirteen percent in fiscal year twenty six. And that is due to the proper allocation of the health insurance over the funds. Over the general fund and um general fund EMS and also waste work. Last, not least. Donations.
Why?
Go ahead.
Why did um?
Well, it seems like the cost of the cost of the vacant insurance was, uh, where it's still cheaper than was. Seems like it cost a great amount.
It is, so for general fund, I think it's about seventy nine percent of our employees is is particularly general fund. And actually, I just got the insurance, what the estimated cost is possibly for this current fiscal, for the next fiscal year. And I think about seventy nine percent of the projected cost. I think in previous years, Scott. It's kinda hard to judge that number and it's really based off of claims, so if you have one year that is just. Someone is really, you have multiple people that have extreme number of claims, it's kinda, kinda hard to judge that number.
One of the things are. Are not there to be saved.
To be safe, yes. Rather be safe than sorry. Mm-hmm. So next is donations. And and donations in um fiscal year twenty four decreased by seventy eight percent and that was just due to limitations and planning. And then in twenty five, fiscal year twenty five increased by seven hundred and fifty percent. And that is mainly due to us. Contributing more to um nonprofits and entities. Yeah. That'll teach you, Scott. So in fiscal year twenty six, we're anticipated um to increase by forty one percent. And there are still a couple that we still need to make a decision on.
I've got issue with one of them, but I'm gonna say you can't, because I don't wanna make. I don't wanna make a statement.
Mm-hmm.
Where something could be potentially untrue. Um so I'm gonna speak to you about it privately, Smith.
Okay.
So we're gonna, we're gonna say something to you about uh.
Okay.
People still hear us and how it goes.
Yes, that's not okay.
Yeah, I missed a beat, so I was just. To you, the the Christmas grade increased of five thousand dollars.
Uh Christmas, no, it's the same as last year, Christmas period, seven L. Are you looking at the more than donation, is that what you're?
We got the wrong one, like, oh, yeah. Two years, six years.
Same, mm-hmm.
Yeah, maybe that, but the city did it, yeah, not that long ago, but personally, when you were not, I mean, I'm too proud. They were helping me here. Not at all.
Scott, I've been here seven years.
Not a long time.
And I don't think that it was fully fixed. Anyway, I think it was kind of like a.
All of ours, okay, yeah.
Yeah. So.
So what we have listed so far. I should say, so everybody looking at the donation. Everybody okay with what's listed?
I would talk to about one.
Okay.
What you said, I think you talked to about one, yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna make a note, note attention. Nothing wanted to be on there. That's, that's the general fund. Anybody got any questions about the general? Go ahead.
What they were donations is that Paris sent an email out, um I'm looking over something. Where she's still had money left over for the brand, you use all the businesses downtown. And I didn't, I assume that, you know, I don't know, qualify, I don't know, we could use some of that right away to work tomorrow or tomorrow, discovery center. And maybe grab one on that. And then, we just.
We're gonna start to.
Yeah, and that way you might be able to do that. So I have a one minute.
Yeah, so can you give what you're. And she would.
She got it.
Children's over grand, I don't, I personally don't have any more about the stuff that I'm gonna speak to you about.
Okay.
Um. You shouldn't need that, it's in front of us, in two weeks.
Yes.
Hmm, we do. Here.
Um. No, we didn't go for waste water.
What you said?
We didn't go for waste water.
Oh, that's for her.
No, I can't.
Waste water. Waste water.
No, please.
At least more, more than our biggest moment.
It is. That one, I really wanna like just kinda explain a few things on that one.
Waste water.
Yeah, for waste water.
Yeah, weekends. They're not working weekends anymore, right, or they're?
They are, they kinda have to work weekends because of the.
Overtime. As much overtime, right?
No, there's not a lot of work, cause now they do have. No, there's not enough work, cause now they do have, and I'll and I'll talk about that too, there they do have five people at the wastewater treatment plant now. So eventually, the idea is to be able to rotate them to the point where. Just like if you were working, if you were working a normal job, really we should get to the point where.
Or they're working Monday, somebody gets all Monday to use the day they work, or it's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then some, then the night, it's all. Thursday, you you.
Yes, mm-hmm, so that we cut down on the overtime. Cause there's there's.
We need two more employees for work.
One more.
One more, and there's an advocate. We have a.
Yes. All right, this one will be as long. All right, water and wastewater. So total projected um revenue grows by five percent from twenty three to twenty four. The total projected revenue saw a hundred percent increase from fiscal year twenty four. To twenty five and that is to our grant funds associated with SIP phase one, which was completed in September. And then total revenue is expected to increase by eleven percent for fiscal year twenty six. This increase is primarily due to the grant funds associated with SIP phase two. And increased revenue from sewage haulers, so SIP phase two is expected to start in June of this year. It should be completed before the full year begins. And as you can also see, our sewage haulers are, that's that's really. That's really starting to, it increases every year, but it is forgetting more and more. So rather payroll costs, payroll open and benefits increased by two percent in fiscal year twenty four. But it decreased by twenty one percent in twenty five and that decrease in twenty twenty five actually has to do with um. The again health insurance costs. And it is also looks like. Overtime decrease as well. And then um the primary increase in fiscal year twenty five and twenty six is due to having five employees. And uh the wastewater department versus. And again, we just discussed, we should, you just say tie at least one more to. Two more employees for wastewater. We said at least one or two more people for the wastewater treatment plant.
We've got. It might be two.
Two, it's two, okay. Cause the goal is always to cut back on the overtime, cause you remember overtime is. Time of death of what their rate is, so we can just cut back and. On overtime itself, it saves us in the long run, not only with just in salaries. Overtime also increases our. Work with compensation. It does, we just had a work compensation audit and it was increased by nineteen thousand dollars due to overtime. So our operating costs. Operating expenses decreased by two percent in fiscal year twenty four and reached by twelve percent in fiscal year twenty five. And is anticipated to increase by fourteen percent in fiscal year twenty six. These increases are due to the well rehabs and remember we have four. Before they've only doing two a year, it is really supposed to be all four. Uh wells are supposed to be rehab each year. And I did a separate line item this year, it's kind of hard to see, but it says well rehabs. And that's based on all four we um uh all four wells being done and it's approximately, I think it was about. Four.
Under chemicals.
Right under, yes, it is. Close and our heat and electric has increased, our lab testing has increased. And it's our lab testing for our wastewater treatment plant itself, and those are kind of things we can't. There's certain testing that has to be done and it has to be done by specific um only specific vendors. And it's it's one of those MBE things that you gotta. And then also with our lift stations, as you all know that we had issues with the lift stations, which brings me to my next. My next topic, due to previous years' increased repairs at the lagoon's lift stations. We're budgeting a seventy eight percent increase in contingency, this is to help offset unexpected repairs.
I think that's amazing, we. Yeah, we we need to have pictures.
So if you see is the library above fund transfer, you see that Scott? For one fifty three, eight fifty, that is to, so they come to us and say, hey. The compressor went down, Jenkins worship just went down, that is our go to. For those repairs above what's in those other expense lines. Cause right now there are our lagoon, our wastewater treatment plant, I believe this is what twenty years old. I believe it, I I think um GMB says it's about twenty years old and there are some upgrades that need to be that, so we we've got to. Got to set aside to make sure that we are ready for any need of repairs that. That are upcoming.
So the fund transfer is just.
That was.
Funds from somewhere.
So that was, that was in fiscal year twenty three and actually that transfer was on the, if you go back to the EMS. It was the EMS. So EMS, we can never, EMS can never transfer to another fund, but other funds can transfer to EMS. So instead of the general fund at that year transferring to. An EMS, our water and wastewater department did. But our EMS department can never transfer to another fund.
So it's always better to have the EMS fund than not.
Yeah. So we can transfer to it from the other two, but they just, they can't transfer to any other one than that.
We said it on my presence in the general fund just because the money's there, so we don't have to transfer them there.
Yeah, it's just easier that way, I mean. We could, we could do it. Half and half, but it's it's just ea- it's easier and cleaner to just do it from the general fund. Yeah. So for our capital outlay, um for our water department. Um the remainder of the water meters, not all of the water meters are having placed in, there are still some water meters like our two inch meters, there are some meters that still need to be placed in. So there's about fifty five thousand dollars um left that we have set aside for water meters. And then the twenty five thousand is for possible needed upgrades and that is for like. Buildings out there at that wastewater treatment plant itself. And then the bottom section that you see um is the SIP phase two project, um which we all know is fully reimbursable by um grant funding by MBE. And then they're also asking for a sewer camera and then if there's any additional engineering services if needed. And that is the end. Yes, sir.
Going back to the streets. Is that, so you're seriously having thirty streets in the middle? How, I guess that's like, we have more than thirty streets in BoMo. Right, so how hard was it laying the thirty streets in City Rapids? So they're they're not even more than thirty.
So Melinda just.
Like, this would cost. Two hundred thousand dollars for this month of. Because if I think of this very streets like. Side streets would cost more than. How that work out for a street or is it like a length thing?
That's the length thing, cause I already know that there's another street um. Were they actually giving it, accidentally giving us a proposal for another street and it's like twenty grand high, so it it really, it it really depends on how long that street is.
Do you mind if this way and not this way? So even down opposite side of the street, right? This way. It's more, yeah, it's more shit, me, yeah, like. I like what, five or six long streets. Right, right. You know, chopped up. Another thing that I just wanted to make you for this budget, like. Also a little mad that um. Travis wanted to start starting out tall and had to sit the previous one.
You're welcome.